All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. This is Thomas, Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrews.
Mostly here.
Mostly here. Excellent. Were the quorum of the board present? I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M. Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty five. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows as encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait till you yield the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that any vote in this meeting will be conducted by a rule call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. And so to make this official, can I have a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting?
So move. Mister Chairman, before we do that, would you like me to take the minutes in the absence of Jay?
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Mind.
No, don't at all.
Excellent.
Tim.
We have a motion. Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as of last meeting. Uh, any discussion, correction, highlight? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Excellent. Um, is there any mail business, anything from the post office that we should take care of?
I make a motion that we pay a bill for a hundred and thirty two dollars and forty eight cents for our ad in the Clinton item. There are two ads in the Clinton item for the hearing.
So moved.
All right, this is the hearing with respect to the November seventeenth meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to pay the Clinton item one hundred and thirty two forty eight and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Um, I have one other information, in, information item.
Sure.
So the plasterages have asked about their common driveway and its potential, um, release or whatever it is we would do. I've asked the Highway Superintendent and the Fire Chief to meet up there on Thursday at one o'clock. Um, so they could say they're either happy with it or they need some other additional work to be done.
Okay.
If any one other individual wants to stop by at one, that'd be great. We don't want to have a quorum, obviously, but I thought we need their input to make a final approval, I would think so.
You said Thursday at one?
Thursday at one, yep.
I'll check. I'll check my schedule. Uh, I can't confirm until I do that, but uh, Tim, you're going to be there?
Yep, I found the plan and I pulled that out. I thought I'd bring that along. I checked with June and there's less than a hundred dollars left in the amount of money that we were given, but I think that was primarily for review with our consultants. You know, it, it talks about a bond in the, in the zoning bylaw, but
It doesn't sound like we did that.
I don't, I don't recall.
We definitely did.
Right, I would think June would know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nobody's making a claim against the bonds to release it, so that's another telltale.
Well, Jolly's had, she said that she made it sound like one of the landowners holds some lien against them, maybe. I don't know. So anyway, I'll do some more digging.
Yeah, well, that would be not us, but yeah.
So I'll report on that next time.
Okay.
That wouldn't be, that would be for the, the annual town meeting though, right?
Um, it's just a common drive, so it's just something that we do.
Yeah.
So i- is this the common drive? They're not trying to have the town accepted as a right of way, right?
Okay. They just wanted.
They want to package it up and say we're done with this.
Yeah, and we want to be sure it's accessible for emergency services. We did this on the uh, back when I was on the planning board with the Ball Hill Road.
Right.
Quite extended, uh, common drives.
Right.
Yeah, when we've accepted, uh, you know, others in the, like the one across the street from me, we've accepted. Um, and I know there was one other that we did. I think it was with Rhodes that we accepted. Um, in, in, in my time on the board. I didn't know if plasterages were trying to do something different.
No, it's just that they want to officially have it stated that it's complete.
Right.
Do we have anything like a certificate of compliance or completion or anything?
I mean, I, I'm trying to recall. It's been so long.
Uh, I think it was just a vote.
I, you know, I, I'll go through the file again. I think there's a simple form in the file that relates to different, each individual common drive, and it's just a statement that the planning board has found it to be sufficient.
And consistent with the plan, yep.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll pull that form out. Cause I think I saw that the other day on some of the others that we've done. Okay, I'll do that.
Right, so no action required on that at this point. Just that follow up.
Does any, anybody have the agenda open?
Um, I do not. See if I can pull it up.
Um, has Jerry Byrne come around and got his thing signed while we're doing that? Because nobody came by my house. And I ordered a pack of buying Sharpies to sign things, and I'm very disappointed. Nobody came by to ask me to sign it.
Well, if he, if he comes here, I'll refuse to sign and I'll send him to you.
Okay. I did. I ordered it and I, I've got it in a box and I've hidden it from everybody else in the household, so they don't charge it. Yeah.
Good for you. I haven't seen him.
Okay.
I wonder, do you think they dropped the mile hour off at the town offices?
I was there yesterday morning and there were no mile hours or no plans, uh.
Okay. All right, seven forty five?
Yeah, so seven forty five is a continuation of Turner Road. Dillison Roy.
I have two Dillison up. There's Seth's hand. Seth, I'm gonna promote you. Maybe not. Yes, there we go. There. There we go.
All right, good evening, board members.
Hi Seth, how are you?
I'm great. So for the record, Seth Donahue with Dillison Roy. I am here tonight, um, to continue the discussion regarding the Turner Road preliminary subdivision that we had submitted some time ago. I was with you a few meetings ago. Um, I'll give you a quick overview of the property. And is it helpful if I put the plan up on the screen or you prefer to do, um, just discuss it at this point?
I think it's nice if you had the plan up so that reminds us.
I sure do. Okay, so hopefully what is before you is the proposed conditions. Uh, so Turner Road has an abrupt terminus, our client's property, the Cunningham's. Their house is right here, number twenty, and we had originally approached the board to, um, see what the feasibility of some potential waivers are related to creating a cul-de-sac style turnaround, uh, specifically with a T-shaped turnaround instead of a rounded, uh, traditional cul-de-sac. We've had some back and forth over that over the last few months. Um, the board's direction to us was to get the opinion of the Highway Super and to meet with the Fire Department. So, um, we were able to do that on October the sixth. Uh, Fred Cummings, the Highway Superintendent, sent an email to us and carbon copied the board uh, that they are generally satisfied with the idea of a T-turnaround in this location. Last week I met with the Fire Department. Uh, they sent over an email today along with a stamped copy of a plan indicating their general approval of the concept as well. Um, out of my discussion with the Fire Department last week was the request, I'm just gonna switch screens for you real quick. Uh, specifically to widen the leg of the turnaround to twenty five feet to provide a sixty foot length, which is longer than what was originally proposed. And specifically to have a twenty foot wide gravel subbase installed at the time of the road installation. Uh, while we will not be paving the entirety of that unless the board directs us to. The Fire Department's stance was that it would be nice to have it there for the support of the vehicles. And if it ever needs additional pavement, they could do so at that time. Um, so based on those changes, we sent over a revised plan set to the board. Um, and that's reflected in the plan that the Fire Department actually stamped approved. They sent a formal letter to you as well.
I'm sorry, who's the they in that sentence?
Uh, the Fire Department.
No, no, sorry. Who would in the future pave it?
Uh, so this, this is intended to, um, not be the town. So this, this would be private. So it's an extremely limited development. Uh, it's basically the, the Cunningham's desire to provide a, um, secondary house site.
No, 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 I, I get that. All I'm saying is if you suggested that if in the future we required it to be paved, they would undertake to do that. And I'm just asking who the they is in that sentence.
I, I'm making the assumption at, at this phase of it that it would be the property owner.
The property owner being the current. Okay.
Or who, or whoever owns it. You know, if this is, if this proceeds to a definitive subdivision, um, and the board has specifics, whether it's a covenant or, or some form of agreement that I, I would expect that it doesn't want, the town does not want responsibility of doing that.
No, 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 ab- ab- absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Uh, so, so the bulk of our preliminary subdivision request were, one, would a T-turnaround be sufficient to the planning board? And then we've outlined in our initial submittal letter and we've also put it right on the plan. Uh, some of the waivers that we would be seeking from the town's standard subdivision roads. And some of those are, are pretty basic based on the limited development. Um, specifically like treat lights, streetlights or street trees, we're asking for relief from that requirement. Um, as it is essentially a, a turnaround only, we're also asking for relief from the requirement to have curbing on there. So I can go line by line down those. But at this point, what we're really seeking is, um, the board's guidance on waivers so that we can move forward with the definitive subdivision um, and incorporate whatever waivers the, the board feels warranted and, um, also accommodate any of your requests. So, so that is a, uh, medium-winded response to, to where we are at this point. So, um, I'd be seeking your feedback now if that's all right.
At the risk of making it long-winded and because I'm looking at this on my iPhone, would you read the waivers, please?
I'd, I'd be happy to. So I, I'm, I'm going to switch to the, the actual letter, um, which again, it, it recites the same things on the plan, but just so that um, I, I feel waiver letter is, is the appropriate way to do it. Um, so, so we request the first one was the subdivision rules and regulations, section four B five A, and that is the length of a dead end street. So from Derby Road to the present terminus of Turner Road, which is, there's no turnaround on it. It's approximately four hundred and fifty feet. As the board's aware that typically, um, dead end roads are limited to five hundred feet. So by the time we put this cul-de-sac style right of way in and we put our T-style turnaround in there, we're looking at a total length of five hundred and seventy five feet. Uh, plain and simple, if the board feels that this waiver is not warranted, I think the, uh, the options of proceeding with this project are extremely limited. So that's why that is number one on our list there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, dead end streets. The T-style turnaround is what we've spoken about a, a fair bit tonight and in the past as well. Uh, being that this is intended to be a private development and being that it would represent an improvement over existing conditions, we felt that the T-style turnaround was warranted. Uh, we're not accessing twenty houses at the end of this road. I, I don't see a point in the future where we would be able to do that. So the T-style turnaround, um, provides for functionality for snowplows, fire apparatus to turn around um, without creating a huge pave island in front of these folks' house. Um, we've also requested, uh, relief for the width of the roadway. So as we originally proposed, I, I'll say Turner Road right now, it is a fourteen feet in change of pavement, fairly deteriorated pavement, um, when it's off our property. We had proposed to essentially match that. As we worked through the process with the Fire Department, the entrance to our site is up to sixteen and the T-leg is at twenty five feet wide. Um, we still feel we need a, a waiver from the requirement to do a twenty foot wide pavement, um, essentially to somewhat match Turner Road on the entrance. If the board felt that twenty feet was required, um, so be it. We, we would move to the definitive process with that additional pavement in that area. Uh, I think sidewalks is fairly self-explanatory. We, we have, um, the long leg of the T or the Turner Road approach is about a hundred and ten feet long. Um, that it would be the extent of sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on Turner Road now, so we would essentially be providing a sidewalk to nowhere. Uh, same thing, grass plots, no sidewalk, no need for a grass plot. We're essentially maximizing green space by using a T-style turnaround. And then I'll do the last two at the same time, uh, street trees and streetlights. Those are, um, would be odd to place in a cul-de-sac in this configuration. So those are the waivers that are requested. Again, they, they're outlined on the plan. Um, if the board wants to go into any detail on any of those individual items, I'd be happy to discuss with you.
No, thank you for that. Um, I have a streetlight in front of my house and interference with my telescopes. I'm not a great supporter of those things.
I'm generally not a supporter of pavement where unnecessary.
No, I think the main thing was we wanted to be assured that the highway and the Fire Department were satisfied and it's evident that they are, so that makes me far more comfortable. The, I'm never eager to see a road, a dead end road longer than five hundred feet, but because this is already four hundred and fifty and to improve it, um, the substantially improve it, you've gone that extra length and, and accommodated with the Fire and Highway Department wants. I, I don't have a problem with extending it that extra hundred and twenty five feet or so because it, it really does make everything far easier for the town in the long run. Um, so I think that's, that's a positive development overall. That really makes a lot of sense.
Mm-hmm.
And the other, um, request for waivers, I, you know, to, we've got those in there. In certain situations, you could see why, you know, asking for sidewalks or whatever would be appropriate because of where the subdivision might be created in relation to other parts of the town, but certainly in this case, any of those waivers seem to me to be appropriate. So, I mean, I'm happy to let's see how we want to word this. In case of
What do we normally do in a, in a preliminary, just to say, record the fact we don't have any substantial objections? What?
It says the, the plan may then be, the, the planning, preliminary plan may then approve, disapprove or approve with modifications. And so, um, I don't see any additional modifications. The there's, there's some sort of easement provision that would be created for that turnaround by the town. I assume. Is that language that would?
Uh, so, so I mean, I mean typically, we do a lot of preliminary subdivisions, um, for zoning protections. That's not the case here. I, I don't foresee you changing zoning on this property in the future and um, really what, what we're looking for is the board's guidance, um, or specifically if there's any waiver that is not warranted in this case. Uh, we'd like to know that before the client expends the money on the surveys and the designs of going into the definitive process. Um, so that they could choose to proceed at that point or not. So, well, the board could certainly grant an approval and approval as is. We fully recognize that we're coming back to you for, um, a more robust plan and probably a, a, a more detailed discussion related to the dotting the I's and crossing the T's and, and it, I, through this conversation tonight, I completely understand that the town, if this is to remain private, um, and there were to be a request to pave the full twenty foot width, we, we would not expect or come back to you and say, well, you approve this. We're, we're gonna make the town or the Highway Department pave this now. This
Okay, then may I make a motion that, uh, we move that the planning board has no material objection to the plan and the waivers proposed before us tonight. And that the, um, final plan will be consistent with that.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to basically endorse this plan to move to the next level. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Give me a second.
Yes, we have a second.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Yep.
Okay, seeing nobody jumping up and down, uh, I will ask you to vote to send this plan on to its next stage. Uh, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Well, thank you. Uh, hopefully we'll see you back in the near future for this.
Right, then it'll be robust. It'll have all the drainage calculations and all the other things that we like to see.
Yeah, so, so typically it would. I mean, in this case, the, the drainage, we're, we're essentially paving an existing driveway at this point. So we don't have the catch basins or anything like that. But we could certainly talk through the technical details on that.
Yeah, I think we need to see where, where your proposed water and swales and what have you are gonna go and what you're planning on doing with the surface water. Cause it is going to be this water. And, and in addition to that, um, you know, we want to see where snow storage is gonna go, if the town puts snow at the end of your driveway, if that's okay, or you know, what the plan is for that. So we need a little bit more, uh, meat around the bone, I think.
Yep. Okay, that's, that's understood.
All righty.
Then, then I will leave you for the evening. Um, I think some of my colleagues are, are waiting in the waiting room, uh, to talk to you about your next thing.
All righty.
Thank you.
See you Seth.
Night Seth.
All righty, so the next item will be the, uh, continuation of the discussion of Central Street.
All right.
Two forty eight Central.
We've got Greg Roy's hand up.
Okay.
Promote him. Ryan Proctor coming at you.
Hey folks.
How are you? How are you?
My video, I'm in my truck, cause I was in, I'm in the town of Groton after a meeting there, so I, I think I'll turn my camera off, cause you can't see me. So I apologize.
Well, we can see you in the dark, but that's entirely okay.
Um, I think, um, Bruce Wheeler is probably here as well as, um, Brad Latham.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Uh.
Do we need to, should I promote them or are they just listening?
Yeah, no, I think it would be good if you could promote them. Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'll, I'll make this, uh, I think pretty briefly. We, um, we were of course here last week, um, to, to review, uh, give you a status update, uh, most notably, um, was to present a, a couple of tweaks to the, to the plan by way of the number of lots and then also to, um, present to you the proposed approach to the, uh, creation and timing of the creation of the right of way through two forty eight Central. Um, we did memorialize that in a letter at that time, so I think that you folks have that. Um, and I, I believe that was met with your satisfaction. Um, I think last, last week you were up against, uh, uh, some timing, uh, constraints with your next, uh, public hearing, so um, you were gracious enough to put us on tonight. So if, if there are any other questions, you know, we're, we're happy to, to take them or, um, sort of, um, follow your lead with how you are, are looking to proceed.
Well, before we start that, because I'm the one taking notes tonight, what was the address on Central Street?
It's, uh, two forty eight.
Two forty eight, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, if, you know, if I happen to take any questions, if, um, if there's, if there isn't any, uh, and you feel comfortable, we certainly would, um, uh, would, um, uh, appreciate it if, if, if you felt moved to, uh, you know, send us onto the next step, uh, as the previous uh, applicant. But again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so.
So I think that, that I think what troubles me a little bit is the, the sequencing of the right of way and the creation of lots and how that, you know, like you said before, was sort of a chicken and an egg situation and I just the right of way needs to be created in order to create the frontage that The right of way needs to be created in order to create the frontage that. We would create, that we would be able to create lots, right? That's the way that that whole scenario goes. And then in addition to that, there's the constraint of the right of way across the railroad tracks where. We were being asked to create a lot there as part of the subdivision prior to you guys having a hundred percent. A hundred percent, you know, of, of, of the getting a hundred percent okay from the railroad, correct?
Well, yeah.
Did you, did you withdraw that? I thought, I saw that.
We did not, we, we, we did propose two lots on the other side, now we're proposing one. So essentially, we're, we're at the preliminary stage here, so you know, no lots would be created, you know, after. If, if you, should you approve the project tonight, and I think what we said last, last week and what still remains the case is that. We know that we need to resolve that issue with, with the railroad prior to the, you know, at, at least prior to the completion. Of the definitive process, perhaps even prior to coming before you with the definitive plans. We actually are gaining some traction on that. We do have a meeting scheduled with those folks for Thursday. So we, we are hopeful to, you know, move that, that forward. At this point, so we would not be asking you, I think, to create lots on the opposite side of the right of way. In the, under the definitive plan, which of course is the next step, prior to having that resolved. So we, we are understanding that that would need to be resolved, you know, we're happy to, if you had some language in, in, in a preliminary approval to that effect. I think that would be, that would be fine and proper and acceptable.
So if, if you move to the second stage and you get a slow roll from the railroad, are you planning on providing this as a two pot subdivision or?
Well, that, that, that may be, there's probably a couple of different scenarios, but we know we couldn't, we can't propose, wouldn't be able to propose in a definitive plan. You know, if that, if there was not a resolution to that, so we, we, we do understand that for sure. And then, you know, relative to the easement, just to summarize, excuse me, the right of way issue through two forty-eight, just to summarize. And I, I do think Attorney Latham is on the call, so if there are any sort of questions he can opine here, but essentially. The, the issue is that. We have to, we have to construct. We have to have the, the road viable frontage, so the road constructed in the right of way. Prior to being able to derive the frontage. To use that frontage for two forty-eight. And if we were to create the right of way in fee, before that was done, we would essentially be creating a more non-compliant lot with two forty-eight. So the way we're proposing to resolve that is to first. Have two forty-eight grant an easement for the construction of the road in the easement. And so when the road is constructed and at that time, at such time as the road is constructed, we would then formalize that. We've essentially convert, if you will, the easement into a formal right of way that would be, you know, in fee. And at that's, at that time, the road would be, the infrastructure would be completed and we would not have the issue relative to the. To the pre, you know, to the making a, a, a non-compliant issue with, with two forty-eight. Essentially, that's what we're proposing. And of course, once you get past that into the site, into the subject site, the, the issue goes away. But that's, that's essentially what we're proposing. On the, on that, you know, to resolve that issue. And again, just like I said with, with the other one, we're, we're in a preliminary hearing here, we, we understand that all of that. Would have to be sort of formalized at the definitive stage, you know, we, we, we'd need legal agreement. You'd want to see legal agreements and, and things in place that, that, that whereby that process could actually be effectuated. We understand that, but I guess we, we say it, we, we're presenting it to you in principle in, in this preliminary.
So, if I understand what you're asking for. It is that if you can accomplish all of this and conditional upon your ability to accomplish all of this. Do we have any fundamental issues, assuming you were?
Thomas, we're losing you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, if I understand you, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is. I think what you're asking. Is. If you could accomplish all of this. Is there anything fundamental to the plan that we would then object to?
Correct.
Is that fair?
Good, yeah, that's a good way, that's a good way of saying it, yeah. We know that we need, we're, we're asking you for preliminary subdivision approval based on what we. What we, what we submitted and we understand that, that there would need to be, you may, you may need to put some language or conditions or what are you going to call them. Relative to those two points, the crossing.
And if you couldn't accomplish easements and so on, obviously.
Yeah, right.
It's a totally different game, yeah.
Okay, that's right, and truthfully, you, you know, it's, it's sort of self-regulating in that. Even if you don't put those conditions in the preliminary, if for some reason we can't accomplish them, we can't really, we can't, we can't proceed to the definitive stage anyway. So, the boards, you know, the board has that, you know, in play where it's kind of a self-regulating issue, if you will. If we can't get the, if we can't negotiate the rail, with the railroad, we won't be able to get a lot on the opposite side. And if we can't negotiate with the, if we, if we, for whatever reason, we do have agreements currently in place with two forty-eight, but for some reason. Something would have happened there, we, we would have an issue with the right of way, so. But if you wanted to put those in as a condition, I think that would be acceptable as well.
Do people want to, me to suggest a motion to focus this?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Then I would move that the planning board vote to say that. It has no substantial objection to the proposal, conditional upon the achievement of. Easement. And other material rights. That are contained in the proposed plans.
So I'll second that, so we can have a discussion at least.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and now I'll open it up for discussion.
So I'm, I'm reading the letter. And I note that. The owner of two forty-eight central will grant an applicant a fifty-foot easement. That doesn't accomplish the sixty-foot requirement, so do you want to modify that or what's your plan?
I think we're showing a sixty-foot on our plan, so that may just be a scrivener's on the letter. I think we're, we intend to grant. An easement in the width that's required for the, for the, you know, to meet your subdivision road standards.
Alright, so that's just a typo or something.
That's good.
I, I guess I'd also want to know that in our acceptance, we're assuming that you're going to. Be able to accommodate any recommendations and requirements from the conservation request commission in regard to the wetlands crossing.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, that, that falls in the same category as the other two, you know, easement related things, you know, we. Independent of your board, we have to get order conditions from the conservation commission, so. We, we understand that when we advance the plans to the next level, we'll have the details required for that. And we will, we would file likely, most of the time we file concurrently, the definitive plan with your board. For the definitive subdivision process and also with the conservation commission, so we, we, yes, we understand that.
So, you know, I mean, part of me feels this isn't ready for prime time, but. I'm willing to listen to the rest of the board's notion of. Whether we're there yet or not, there, the. I think you're, you're suggesting that you're. Not going to go anywhere with this unless you can accommodate these three major concerns, the crossing of the railroad right of way, the. Delivery of the. Agreement with the landowner to get the sixty-foot easement and the additional problems that you might have to face in regard to. The wetlands crossing, so. You know, those, those are the big issues in my mind, but.
And, yeah, and Tim, you know, what the motion encompasses those, which is to say. We have no major issues that if they could accomplish all of those things. We're not. We don't have something, you know, hidden in the cards against our chest that suggests we would have a problem with it.
Right, now I see where you're coming from.
Any further? Discussion, any comments anybody else wants to make? Board members?
Yeah, I mean, I think those are three big hurdles and as long as it's very clear that. Any. I mean, it's not even an approval, really, but.
It's just an indication to them as to whether, if they do all these things, then we're not.
We don't have any problems other than those, we don't have any problems other than those three things.
Exactly, exactly.
So I would be able to be okay with that as well.
Anybody else? I think at this time, no one's jumping up and down, so we'll act on the motion. There's a motion to.
You want me to read it for you?
Yeah. Yeah, please reread it for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That the planning board has no objection to the preliminary plan. Provided that the contingencies. That we've just listed are satisfied.
Good, so the motion in a second has already been made, so at this point I will ask you to vote on the motion. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, I, motion.
Jay's here.
Chase here?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna give him the rest of the evening after.
Yeah, let's, if, if he hasn't been here for the entire deliberations, then I don't.
No, I will continue to take minutes and submit them.
Yep.
I don't think it's appropriate for him to vote on this motion if he hasn't been here for the deliberations, is what I was saying.
Yeah, no, cool.
Okay, so I'm not going to ask him to vote, I'll ask, the rest of you have already voted the affirmative, I'm the last one, I vote. Yes as well, so motion carries four with one abstention. Alrighty.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, next on agenda is Central Mass.
And they are here.
Excellent.
Not entirely sure who it is.
Ron. There he is, hi Ron.
Hello there, I was momentarily distracted by the fact that my name is just saying CMR PC. Hello, everyone on the planning board, my name is, for the record, is Ron Baron. I am the manager of land use and zoning at the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. And I'm here today regarding the. Zoning bylaw and subdivision rewrite that we are undertaking with the town. So tonight I would like to just provide a quick update on where we are and what we've been doing. And then hear from you all as to how we would like to proceed over the next few weeks with this process. So what we have been doing so far, for those of you who have not been in one of the discussions with us recently. This was a project that we had received a grant for through the state to advance. A zoning diagnostic that had been done last year where we had examined the entire zoning bylaw. We had generated some comments based on past planning that the town had done for possible revisions. This is the next step in that process, we're going to be taking those comments, turning them into. The proposed revisions that the town can take, that you all can take to town meeting. And we are. Going to also be looking at the subdivision regulations based on a model that we had put together last year. Which the, kind of the purpose of that is to just review everything that is in your subdivision regulations and. To make sure that they are up to, to date. We have also been working with you all on the. Solomon Pond Mall project, making sure that the zoning there is going to be. Suited for whatever proposed redevelopment that is coming down the pike for that. So we have done some work, we've met with, with the town of Marlborough. We've met with, and some individuals in your town to talk about the Solomon Mahon Mall. And we are looking at a strategy for moving forward with some possible proposed revisions for that. And we have also been reviewing the zoning diagnostic and developing a strategy for moving forward with that. What we have been considering doing is, we have a. With the, the zoning diagnostic piece of it, we have a number of comments on every single section. Of the zoning bylaw, we believe that because of the way that the zoning bylaw is structured. It would probably make sense for the town to do a number of smaller amendments over the next couple of town meetings. Rather than doing a wholesale rewrite and trying to. Package it as one giant amendment. And to that end, what we were considering was the option of breaking up the, the, the individual. Proposed changes that were recommended in the zoning diagnostic on a section by section basis. And then we can have various members of the planning board leading the review of those along with CMR PC. To come up with some, the textual changes needed to get these to town meeting. Before I go any further with any of that, is there any questions from anyone, just sort of like thirty-five thousand foot questions that anybody has on this project? And what we're trying to get out of it? No, okay. So just for some context on what we were thinking in terms of that process. You know, we're going to be going chapter by chapter and looking at, at some, the recommendations that came out of the zoning diagnostic. But there are a few of them, such as the. The flood overly district where it maybe makes sense for us to work with someone on the conservation commission. There are some additional recommendations where it might make sense to discuss this with someone from the council on aging. There's different members of different, of, of town committees where it might make sense to get their input from it. So that was one idea that we had had for how to proceed with this, but it's really up to you. How you want to, what, how you want to take the next step, who you want to involve. And which individuals we would want to, to get feedback on from the, on, on the individual sections as we go through them. If that makes sense. Did?
Ron and I talked the other day and it it seemed as though um, perhaps he and I might look at the diagnostic, look at the the bylaw, um, segment it to some degree into some bite-sized packages and then come back to the board with what those might be and some recommendations about which planning board members might wanna pursue some of those more intensely and then what other committees in town we might join up with in order to uh, move the process forward. Um, and so we we thought if, you know, if if people on the board felt that that was an appropriate approach, then we'd we'd set to that task and then come back to the board with some thoughts about the best way to accomplish that.
I I think that that's a rational way of handling it, making it into small, manageable pieces.
Yeah, we Jay signs and Carolyn floodplain and obviously we've got to talk to the ZBA about non-conforming uses and.
Right.
But it it does seem as though uh, with that template of the diagnostic giving us an idea of where the major holes are and pitfalls. Um, you know, we, some chapters might not need much work at all. Some might need a little more. I think Ron felt that the overall structure of the bylaw was still intact enough that it it made sense to proceed. He he's, I guess we've the commissions work with some towns where the structure of the bylaw is so unwieldy that it really needed to be worked from the basement up and and that's really not the case in our situation.
Thank you, Tim. You 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 answered the question that uh, I was going to ask, which is are we? You know, because we obviously have a bylaw that's intensely focused on Berlin. Is it structurally something that is unwieldy, difficult to communicate to people developing from outside the town and so on? And what I hear you saying is, no, it that it's 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 functional in that respect and uh, we just need to tweak certain holes. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's that's absolutely my uh, impression.
Okay.
I haven't had any, I've I've read a lot of bylaws and I don't have a lot of uh, of overarching concerns with the way that this is, this one has been structured. Um, there's obviously things that have been brought up in the diagnostics such as definitions that seem to be missing or um, you know, certain bylaws where we're not entirely sure if they're still enforceable under Mass General Law. Um, I know some of them you're already taking care of um, or you're already working on such as the uh, the ADU um, provisions. Um, and I, you know, and there's some questions I have on those, but we can kind of get those answered as we as we go along, I think. Um.
Well, I'd be particularly concerned with anything that you felt was obviously not enforceable under Massachusetts zoning by law, but I presume the board is going to follow the category that you just described?
Yes, absolutely. And if there's if there's anything that uh, comes up that we really think needs to be um, amended because we don't think it's it's enforceable anymore, then that's that's how we're going to structure what how we.
Yeah.
The changes.
That that that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a red, in in the red, yellow, green category. That's a red. Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, and the nice thing is that when we, as we identify those red flags, I mean, those can flow to the top and be the first ones that we address at a town meeting and then some of the lesser issues that, you know, might need housekeeping can fall as suited another town meeting. So we don't end up overwhelming town meeting and we don't put all our eggs in one basket, so.
Yeah.
No, I think, given the fact we haven't you know, effectively appropriate structure and we need tweaking, I think that's the way to go. Yes.
Hmm.
And I think that the one thing that's going to um, uh, one thing that's gonna take a a good amount of time um, is going to probably be digging into the the table of uses, um, especially given what uh, you'll be wanting to do with uh, that Solomon Pond overlay. Um, so that's gonna take a lot of work, I think. Um, but mo- for the most part, there's a lot of uh, lot of like, a lot of little things such as again, like definitions are missing. There's uh, it's there's sections where uh, Jane had pointed out, who had worked on the the diagnostic. Um, she had pointed out that the the way certain sections are worded is not the way that they're worded now under the, under the, like, things like that are are going to be fairly minor changes, but they're going to be important. Um, I'm assuming that um, my understanding is that the ADU um, bylaw, you have already worked on a change and it was already submitted or was that the one where you were just waiting for the attorney general's review or?
Yeah, we're waiting for the AG's office to um, give us their comments, which surprises me because last I talked to the town clerk's office, they were expecting something soon. Let me see if I can get in touch with the assistant town clerk in the other part of the house here.
I was gonna say, is he upstairs or?
Yeah, he's upstairs, so.
So and there, the only other one that uh, I was curious about um, was the uh, recreational marijuana uh, moratorium. Um, has that expired or is that something that the town is considering replacing? Or have you just been running with the the moratorium since it was passed?
No, we allow certain types of facilities at certain places.
Okay.
Okay. In town, it, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know because it wasn't clear from the uh, from the the version that I'd seen, it had been provided by Jane, if it was still in effect or not.
Did we have a moratorium?
We did, right at first, when it first passed.
Yeah, we did a long time ago, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think Mr. Andrew, that was you, if I remember correctly. At least you spoke to it at town meeting.
I did. It didn't necessarily represent my personal uh, political approach, but yes.
Yes.
And so there are things like that where what we'll end up probably doing is is it'll be having, it'll have to be amended for clarity, um, just to make sure that the official bylaw reflects that reality. Um, because again, the version I saw still had the language of the moratorium on it. Um, it may well be that it's just that the version I had was not reflective of the of the current uh, bylaw you're enforcing. Um, but we just need to make sure that that's the case and there'll be small changes like that. It's the kind of things we want to catch and focus on and make sure it's as clear as possible.
The the town clerk's office says not yet, but um, they have another, the AG's office has another three weeks, so. We may not hear anything until December, but we'll, but we'll have something in place that we can use to react to what we've already put in place, so that'll be good.
Isn't it great to, we live in that world where you can text somebody who lives in the same house? Oh, man. Okay.
Um, we have talked about um, provisions for stormwater management and and that would be a standalone document as I guess we've talked in the past that you'd work with, that's that's not part of the zoning bylaw in most communities, right?
Uh, that's my understanding. Um, I do still need to check with our, um, we have a a manager of who handles all the open spaces and sustainability stuff. I just still do need to check with her to make sure that I'm correct on that.
And then provisions for low-impact development? Um, are are those built into the to the zoning bylaw now within most towns?
They would be, yes.
Okay, so that's a new idea for us anyway. We we really haven't tried to incorporate those issues into the bylaw, so. That's new territory. Are there other areas that are completely?
But as I understand that, that's a non-zoning bylaw.
We're we're saying that low-impact development would be.
Oh, sorry.
Would be part of.
Would be part of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So in my understanding of the distinction is that the low-impact development is about what happens within the boundaries of the parcel um, in terms of landscaping and setbacks and uh, other treatments for making sure the runoff doesn't get to the public space. Um, so that's, that would end up being something that uh, is generally incorporated into the zoning bylaw.
And then then it's enforced through the site plan approval and special permit process?
Yes.
So in our case, we would wanna work closely, the ZBA in Berlin, of course, deals with all that site plan approval other than the big overlays that we've dealt with or senior residential developments. That's, senior residential development's ours? I guess they are, right? Anyway, um, we'd work with the ZBA to to iron out those details. Good, okay. Are there other new pieces of zoning bylaw that we just missed in the past that ought to be addressed this time around?
Um, so there were a number of recommendations in the uh, in the zoning diagnostic report that was produced. Um, don't remember off the top of my head. I know that uh, low-impact development was one of them. There was a couple other ones that were recommended for the town to consider. Um, I can send you uh, the comprehensive list that was from that, that they recommended the town consider um, after this meeting, but there were a few that were on that, that were in that report.
I mean, the other piece that I think we're recognizing is deficient is the inclusionary zoning section and that it's probably inoperable the way it's written and the sort of the the lay of the land today in terms of the development process in most communities, so. That's another one that I think will probably change more substantially than a lot of other sections. Great.
I think great. Um, and just for, in terms of timeline, for anybody who um, hasn't been at one of the other discussions we've had on this, um, we have uh, grant funding through the end of this fiscal year, which will be June thirtieth. Um, and so we will be happy to uh, continue working with you all the way through to the end of that grant, producing new text. Um, obviously, if there's anything you want to bring to this year's town meeting, we can prioritize that so we can have it done in advance of when you ha- or holding it, because I believe when I spoke with you, Tim, uh, you, your town has a fairly early town meeting.
Early May.
Yeah, it's May, so the warrant closes the, usually the middle of February, so we've got three and a half months.
Yeah. So that would be the kind of, uh, that would definitely be something we would want to consider in uh, terms of of what we want to prioritize to bring, if there's anything you want to bring forward immediately for amendment. Otherwise, we can just continue uh, producing recommended uh, changes and um, you can bring that to town meeting whenever you are, uh, when you feel ready.
Yeah. So Ron, why don't you and I plan on a a session together sometime where we can um, look at the diagnostic, look at and see if we can raise what the 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 major concerns are and then I can, you know, we can report back to the troops here about what we target for potential town meeting in in uh, May for this cycle and see if everybody's in agreement about that.
Yeah, that sounds like a great approach. I'm happy to do that.
Is that all right with everybody?
That sounds good.
Perfect.
Good. Great. Thanks, Ron.
Well, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it and I hope you guys have a a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Excellent.
Um. Mr. Teach had a a calendar issue.
Oh. It was on twenty twenty-four?
Yeah. Jay, are you there?
Well, actually, I went to sign on tonight. I clicked on the link and it said, no, the meeting's not till the eleventh. Why are you clicking on it now? So Microsoft, Microsoft is responsible.
Hmm.
I see.
It's an interesting excuse. That's a new one.
Yeah.
Rest of us all are able to get on, but that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. We yeah, yeah. We we don't expect an IT man to
Right.
be in touch with these things. That's uh, and the good news that Jay is that uh, I volunteered to do the minutes for seeing things happen.
Okay.
We're good.
Um, you're you're not gonna use ChatGPT to write them, are you?
No, you know, yeah, I I won't even go into that.
I will say I found my first good use of ChatGPT. I had um, somebody asked me about some laws and I found them the, I found the language, but I couldn't actually understand the language. So I cut the law and I put it into ChatGPT and I said, put this in layman's terms. Um.
Yeah, well, let me tell you, as a lawyer and I use sometimes ChatGPT to get me to sources. Um, be careful.
Sure, but just kind of like as a basic overview.
No, it's a basic overview, it's fine.
Is this even what I'm looking for, kind of?
No, 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 no. No, I mean, my 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 feeling is that uh, yeah. If you want, if you want to create a cow and you collect the entire experience of a cow and you transmit that to people, so I'm a freaking cow, you know, it's like anyway.
So Carolyn, did it work?
It did, yes.
I know, it's it's a great initial sort of like guidance.
Yeah.
If you understand that you have to look at the original documentation and you have to be careful that it hasn't biased itself into that, but yeah, it's 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 a labor-saving device. You know, if you use it appropriately, just like a freaking lawnmower, you know?
Yeah, well, this was, you know, the state, like, I was looking at the state's published laws on the state website and, you know, I don't, I don't know who decided laws needed to be written in a way that nobody could actually understand them.
Uh, so it keeps you business.
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah. That's why we have a tax code, too.
That's right.
The accountants could have a job.
Right.
Yeah, no, all I'm saying is it is that, so you have to be careful with it, you know?
Yeah. Yep, absolutely, but you know, uh, instead of struggling and being like, oh, I think I know what this is and
No, no.
Generally, yeah.
I use it to I'm the chief regulatory attorney for the uh, firm that I work for and I use it often to sort of like orient myself if I'm not familiar with something.
Right.
And then I dig down on it, yeah.
Right.
Perfectly good.
Cool. Cool.
The last uh order of business is uh if we want to entertain voting on the two warrant articles. From the hearing.
I would, I would move that we, uh. Vote to approve the first of the two warrant articles, which is the one that. We have rewritten.
The planning board wrote?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the uh warrant article. Um, that's planning board.
As submitted.
Create, yep, uh, any.
The first one is Highland Commons or? The Solomon.
I take one, I take two, I forget, sorry.
It includes both.
Yeah, it's one article.
Oh, it's one article, I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's two separate ones we have to take up, Carl, and we have to take up the one that we did, and those citizens petition.
Oh, I see.
That's why they're two.
That's, I get it, yeah. Cause I thought it was one, but then you said two and, yeah.
No, no, we have to, we have to report on the citizen's petition as well.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on our article, planning board, um, created article, and it's, uh, was there a second? Timothy seconded it, so uh any further discussion?
I would just say we had a lot of discussion on this last week. And I would also note that, uh. Tim. Circulated uh advice from our town council that I think was pretty consistent with the discussion that we had. Last week.
Correct.
In other words, it was a low risk for spot zoning.
Correct.
But I'm glad we asked the question.
No, app.
Makes it, makes it uh easier.
Yeah, no, I, I agree completely.
Any further comments or discussion, penetrating insights?
I would just like to say, if I am ever chairman of this, you need to send me your script for the beginning of the meeting because it's brilliant.
I've only been using it for the last, like, five years.
Right, yeah, it's, it's great.
Had to believe.
I could not improve it.
All right, uh, seeing that we are now at the point where we have to take a vote, I will ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrews.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carol McDonald.
Reluctant, aye.
Tom Sanford, no.
All right.
Motion carries four to one.
Tom, you, you took the privilege of, you know, voting last and, you know, you know my feelings about dry. You, you did what I would have done if I were the last vote, so.
That's the privilege of being the chair.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with that, yep.
Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion for the second warrant article.
I would make a motion to approve the second warrant article as presented.
This is the citizens petition one.
Which is a citizens petition, which is uh on the agenda of the special town meeting for November seventeenth.
Um, second.
So we have a motion and a second for the citizens petition. Any further discussion?
I, I would only suggest, you know, that I'd be willing to vote in favor of this. Provided that the motion under the article. Uh, allowed the uh, the planning board to make appropriate adjustments to. Effect this within the structure of uh the zoning bylaw.
And your proposed changes to their citizen petition will take place on the town floor or? When do you propose to make those changes?
I, I, yeah. I mean, I think what we're dealing with here is. What they propose doesn't fit within the bylaw, you know, so how do you deal with that?
Right, it's imperfect language, I get that.
Yeah, um. And. Yeah, I think that that would, uh, I think it would require an amendment on the town floor and what we're saying is we approve of it if you. Take care of the administrative details and we can make them, you know, one can make a motion on the town floor, that I think. It's, yeah, it's a difficult situation, yeah.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
It is a tough one, and so when would you, would you include that in your report or how would they, how would we convey as a planning board? Where we conditionally voted on this?
Well, the, the motion that I was proposing was. That we approve of it provided that. A motion be made, and you're right, I had to put this in there, but the motion be made. To resolve. And, and I, I can work on the uh, the specific language of this, but you guys will understand what I'm saying, is to resolve the uh. Issues of integrating this, yeah, of integrating this into the uh existing zoning bylaw.
Yeah, but I mean, essentially what you're doing is you're saying you, you'd like to turn this article into the planning board's article.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I, right, but which is exactly why we have our own article.
Right.
And I think. To be fair to the citizens petition, we have to vote on the petition as it stands.
Well, no, I think we could say we're in favor of it provided that. Some administrative adjustments be made to appropriately integrate it into the existing zoning bylaw. As it stands, I'm not sure we can deal with it.
No, I mean, I asked Heather for a comment and, and she felt that it didn't accomplish the objective. As worded, which is what we're saying. So what you're, you're proposing is that we would support it if it was. It was to be amended at that town meeting in such a way that we were.
That it was integrated with the existing zoning bylaw, yes.
And, um. How, how would we then deliberate as a board to determine? At that moment that the amendment that might be made on the floor was sufficient?
Well, we could put together that amendment.
Yeah, um.
That's tricky.
Yeah, and I mean, we definitely have to talk to, uh. That the opponent of the citizens petition and so on, but I, I, I don't see any other way to deal with it because if it passes, if it passes. It just does, it's, you know, it's a square peg in a round hole.
Right.
Well. You're, you're assuming that ours might not pass and theirs might?
If there's, no, if there's passes, then we pass over and I think everybody understands we've already accomplished that.
Right.
Yeah, so it's like if ours doesn't pass, then it's like. A- and I think that's highly unlikely.
Right.
So we're, we're really talking about having something in our way back pocket on this, um. And I think, and I, I have thought about this, because it's, it is, uh, it's unusual and it's awkward.
Here, what, let's, let's play out another scenario, um. We make a motion that our article pass, we give our report, it passes. Then our assumption is that the, the second article would, there'd be a motion to pass over.
Right.
Now. It, let's assume that that took place. Um, then our report wouldn't have to be given.
Because it was passed over, yes.
Now, if that's the case, then. You know, I'm completely happy to, to, to have a motion that says if our article passes and theirs. Is, is a motion that, um, i- if our article passes, then we could simply say that we don't approve of their article. We could have a motion that said we don't approve of it and that would be our.
Oh, no, I, I actually think our appro, our, our report should be, it's already been accomplished.
It, it wouldn't have to be made at all.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
If there, if our article fails and their motion has to be considered. Then what you're proposing is that a report. I can see a way forward with this then, okay, so uh your motion is that. If their article is considered, we, we support it. Under the, that the modifications are made to make.
Exactly, exactly, that's, that's, that's the motion that I'm making, yeah.
And that report potentially will never, w- won't have to be made if the.
I devoutly hope so, yes.
If the first one fails, then that's our motion, okay, I can see where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Cause we don't want it to be passed the way it is.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, I mean, I, uh, driving into Boston on Wednesdays, I've thought about this. That's the best way I could think of to deal with it.
I mean, we can't responsibly support this the way it is.
Right.
If it, if it's gonna cause more problems.
So our, our position is that we support it. Under the condition that it be modified on the floor when amendment.
To appropriately integrate it.
Right.
And I'll give you the, the wording, to appropriately integrate it into the language of the existing zoning bylaw.
All right, I can second that motion then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's a long worded motion. Many twists and turns.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a very short motion. It's that we approve it. Conditioned, does it be amended? To integrate with the existing zoning bylaw. That's it, yeah. I was trying to be, despite being a lawyer, I was trying to be non-long-winded to that.
I don't think you accomplished the mission. All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion on the uh citizen petition? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
No, oh, aye, sorry, aye.
What's that?
Modifications in favor.
With the modifications, you're an affirm, affirmative?
Yep.
Okay, so you're, yes, Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carol McDonald.
Another reluctant, yes.
And Tom Sanford, no. Very, uh, motion carries four to one.
Okay. Excellent.
That's all the uh stuff on the agenda, anybody has any last minute? Things they wanna add?
So I met with.
I thought we were adding someone at the last minute, but I can't find their correspondence on it, I don't know whether it was text or one of my three email addresses.
Well, well, you look, Tim's got something.
So before Jay, you got here, I, I, uh. I met with the building inspector yesterday and I pulled the plan for the common driveway on. Soy Hill Road, I met with June and the only remnant of funds that seems to be there is the. Remainer of what we were given to do a review and that's less than a hundred dollars. Uh, there, there doesn't seem to be evidence of a bond, but I think the plasterages feel that there's some encumbrance somehow. That might have some monetary value to them from somebody and I'll check with Jolly about that again, on Thursday at one. The highway, Fred and, and Mike from the fire department are gonna be. Um, at the common driveway to look at it to see that, you know, where it might be deficient or um in compliance. So we'd be able to relay that information to the proponent. So I wanted you to know that. Um, I also talked to Richard about subdivisions, which, you know, came up tonight a little bit, which was helpful. I talked to him also about. Well, we talked about home-based contracting businesses. That have been approved and, you know, are on that cycle where they have to be re-approved every five years. And we, he, he, he may very well be preparing a letter. To a number of those non-compliant renewals, um, to send to them and say, you know, by the way. Your time is up and you've got to come in for approval with the ZBA, um, just as a reminder, so I encouraged him to do that. And then the last thing we talked about was, um. The inclusionary zone and bylaw and the, the notion that six or more lots require an affordable unit. And we looked at Mark's plan of the four lots plus A, B, and C, which means seven. And, you know, I said, given the fact that the. Inclusionary zone and says you can't segment a project in such a way that you, you escape that responsibility. I think he's in agreement that, um, if there are seven lots on that site now, there needs to be one that's. One of the units needs to be an affordable unit. So that's something that we should put on our agenda for the next time, just to uh review that and make sure that that's the position we. Might take and then we can get back to Mark about that. That's all I have.
Then I would make a motion to adjourn. At nine oh three.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second, and it's non-debatable, so I will ask you to vote, Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Alan McDonald.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.